Pledge of Allegiance.
I would just see the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please draw your own silence. Thank you very much. Please proceed.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Items two through nine constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the June twenty-fifth meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four from the county treasurer includes A, approved property tax refund request for parcel ending in one zero one one in the amount of four hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents. And item four B, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for Anthony Sulzberger. Item five from the deputy commissioner of elections is to receive the appointment of Hunter Folsom to fill the Willow Township trustee position vacated by Deb Sulzberger. Item six from building services is approval of purchase, offer, sale, or salvage per personal property disposition policy. Item seven from the county auditor includes A, approval of liquor license application for Woodbury County Fair in Mowville, and B, approval of cigarette permit or tobacco application for Heritage Express in Sloan. Item eight from board administration is approval of appointment of Scott Herbold and Deborah Weaver to the Woodbury County Library Board of Trustees. And item nine from community resources includes A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions, and B, authorization to initiate hiring process.
I'll move the consent agenda?
I'll second the motion by Taylor. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. This time we'll move on to item ten from the county sheriff. For action, this is approval of raise for salaried administrative assistant effective July one. We may have, we probably will have to come back to this after a couple minutes when we reach our four thirty-five P M set time.
Okay. Good afternoon. I was told a little while ago I may not have the correct official title of this person, but I believe that the auditor's office knows who we're speaking of. The reason I'm bringing this forward was brought to my attention a couple months ago by Chief Deputy Wingert that the one person in our office over the last several years during some of the COVID funds that were given to the rest of our union staff was this particular administrative assistant who is a wage plan employee. Other wage plan employees had been given raises over that same time that were significant. And so he brought it to my attention that this particular employee had kind of been overlooked by our office by mistake. She does exceptional work. She handles all of our accounts receivable, payable, deals with the office, the auditor's office on a regular basis. And so after looking at everything, what I'm asking you to do is increase her salary by six thousand for fiscal year that started yesterday. And what I would ask is that I don't want to, I don't want to take any more money out of the budget. I'm not asking for additional funds. What I would ask the board to do is to, we have a line item for ten thousand dollars for professional services or legal services. I looked, last year, we still have nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars left from last year's ten. So I'm confident that we can, we can move that money into that, into, to cover that expense so it doesn't cost the taxpayers any additional money than what's already been budgeted. So, here if you have any questions.
Mr. Taylor?
Thank you very much. Is this person currently protected by a bargaining unit?
No, she's wage planned.
She is wage planned.
She's wage planned.
How did it get missed that she didn't get the bump with other wage plans?
So the other wage plan is in our jail, the jail administrat, the Captain Harlow, the other two lieutenants who were there, and they were low, so they had gotten raises that were significant to catch them up to other folks in their respected comparables. And so it was just, we just didn't, we just missed it.
She got the wage plan bump, but in comparison to like positions across the state?
The highest wage plan increase was twenty-one point two three percent, and the lowest was nine point two percent, and she got the three percent over those years. So this six thousand bump would just simply catch her up to the other wage plan people in our office. And then the, our correctional staff in July of twenty twenty-two got an eight percent increase. And then the AFSMI staff got one thousand of ARPA money, and then the jail staff got two thousand, I believe, of ARPA money that you guys all gave them, and I'm grateful that they got all that. It's just that in everything that was going on, I just overlooked her not getting any of it.
I'm sorry. We're gonna have to come back. Reason is we have a four thirty-five set time. We told the entire world at four thirty-five P M we would be discussing the public hearing and sale, hearing and sale of property parcel, also known as thirty-one oh one, Edmonds Avenue. So with that, the public hearing is now open. Before we receive bids, is there anyone to speak for or against the sale of the property itself?
You're en route, Mr. Chair. I move that the public hearing be closed.
I'll second the motion by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. We are now ready to receive bids for this property. If you would like to submit a bid, please come forward, state your name and address, and your opening bid.
Hello, I am Eric Vega, thirty-one twenty-five Edmonds Avenue. I live on the west part of this property. I'll just go with the minimum bid for the opening bid.
And that'd be three hundred and eight, correct?
Yeah, three hundred and eight.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I am Daniel Black, twenty-eight twenty-one South Glass. Grew up in the neighborhood. I'd like my opening bid to be five hundred, please.
Okay. Minimum increments are, of course, ten thousand. Just kidding. Just this joke. Thank you, Mr. Raddick. He normally does our jokes.
If you guys want to stay up there and have a bid against each other.
Oh, okay.
It looks like somebody else wants to bid too.
I was gonna raise mine to six hundred.
Okay.
Robert Bradham, sixteen twenty-five Hundred and Tenth Street. Opening bid would be eight hundred.
Nine hundred.
A thousand.
Thousand one hundred. Thirteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
There we go. Sixteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred.
Two thousand.
Two thousand one hundred.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-three.
Okay, we have twenty-three hundred dollars submitted by Mr.
Eric Vega?
Eric Vega. Going once, going twice. I'll move the prop-
Three. Three thousand. Dean Bradham, twenty-six oh four South St. Olive.
Thirty-one hundred.
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-six.
Four thousand.
All right.
Move that the property be sold to Mr. Bradham for four thousand dollars?
Second motion by Taylor. Hearing no other bids. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. Okay, we'll return to the sheriff's item. Could you, or the auditor's office, clarify the position of this person since Mike said it wasn't administrative assistant?
We're not, I don't think there's a consensus on the official title of the person, but we're all in agreement that it is the same person that we're speaking of.
Okay. And the role is somewhat like administrative assistant?
That's what, that's what I refer to her as, as my administrative assistant. The people in the office refer to her as mom because that's when, that's who you go ask if you have money to spend is you check with mom.
Gotcha.
She handles our budgeting, our finances, and everything.
Could you walk us through the math as far as where the hourly rate or salary is? And what percentage corrections, to use that word, would result in six thousand dollars? Since that's an even number, and just want to be transparent.
Yes. The six thousand would be a seven point eight percent raise. It's not as high as any of the other wage plan folks got earlier. But with this three percent raise that I think was already passed for this particular year, that would put her at, right in that comparable with what the other folks got. And again, if I would have known about it during budgeting process, I would have come, I would have come forward during the budgeting process. So it was, I just wanted to figure out a way to get it, make sure I could get it done for her benefit, and yet not cost the taxpayers any more money. And that, that professional services is a discretionary fund, so, and like I said, this year we're giving back nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five of the ten thousand that was budgeted for the last fiscal year.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever been worried about your current year, Sheriff, as far as having other funds. It's obviously a commitment for future years, so that's why we're interested.
No, I understand.
Yep. Is the proper method involving a raise to the biweekly or a percentage? Or because we've-
I see heads that are nodding yes.
One of those answers I said is a yes from Michelle Scaff, our deputy auditor.
I would recommend making the increase on the biweekly rate, and I would request if you would indicate if it's on the fiscal year twenty-five approved wages or the fiscal year twenty-four approved wages.
Twenty-five is the year that starts yesterday, correct?
Yes.
Yes. That's what I'm asking for, is to start it from, for yesterday.
Okay, so the request is for a seven point eight percent increase to the biweekly pay for FY twenty-five, correct?
Yes. If you, unless one of you want to kindly double check my, my math, but I believe she was at seventy-five, nine seventy-five, and six percent of that would be, or six thousand would be seven point eight percent, I believe. We all know math is, off the top of my head is not my strong suit. I think we've addressed this in previous board meetings.
Seven point eight.
Seven point eight would be five thousand nine two six, so it's a little higher than that.
Well, and, and five cents, Mr. Bittenger. Don't, don't cheat the employee off of it.
That's true. That's true.
And you said this would get them to a roughly what percentage raise over a certain time period?
It was already approved in the, in the budget cycle. I believe wage plan was three percent.
Okay.
So, and it's my understanding that the seventy-five, nine seventy-five was, that was the wage, that was the salary prior to that three percent. So if you add three percent plus this seven point eight, that would get her to ten point eight, which puts her right comparable with the other wage plan employees. Not, not at the high end, but right near that low end. But theirs has been compounded over the last couple of years, and hers will not have been. So that's why it made sense to, to give her that ten point eight.
And the major factors you mentioned were the eight percent?
Yep, the, the low person, the low wage plan in our office received nine point two percent increase in, from twenty-one through twenty-three, one got twelve point seven five and one was twenty-one point two three. So it just catches this person up to the other wage plan people in the office. And then, like I said, correctional staff was an eight percent increase in July of twenty-two. They also got two thousand in ARPA funds, and the AFSMI union people got a thousand in their ARPA.
Yeah, and the board did that due to the staffing crisis with correctional officers at the time.
So Michelle is correcting my math and says it would be seven point nine percent.
Did all the wage plan receive COVID bonuses?
I don't believe so. Did they? Did wage plan get that?
In a, in a way, correct, Melissa?
Yes, the wage plan.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Melissa, I'm the community resources director. So the wage plan was four percent and four and a quarter. AFSMI was two point five, so we gave them a thousand dollar bump to try to equal the four percent.
Yeah, we, we did something that was intended to match-
That's why we didn't give it to wage plan.
What, what we did was intended to match what other employees got. Imperfect as it may be.
Well, and the other positions were done by studies on comparables within the office.
The eight percent, you mean, was, I mean, certainly for correctional officers.
Right, well, then the other wage plan that were like Harlow and, I don't remember the other individual involved. Did we do?
Are there other similar positions that are union in, in this office department?
No.
So this, this is the only, this is the only one?
Yes.
Okay. What do you guys think?
This person got the four point two five, right?
Believe she got four percent during that time, is the, according to the notes I have. When others got twelve point, other wage plan got twelve point seven five during the same time, twenty-one point two three and nine point two zero.
Well, that's because we had done comparables on those positions. Was there a comparable done on this position?
I didn't, we didn't, I did not do a comparable. No. Again, I'm not, again, I guess I understand you're looking at how the ramifications into the future, but.
Well, I just think, like, we had multiple positions within the county that were all requesting raise increase, or pay increases at the time, and we tasked our H R director with doing comparables on all those positions, and some of them got pretty substantial increases, and some actually, I think the lowest was one, and the some got zero.
Do you have a comparable for her?
I mean, that's, for you guys that weren't here, I mean, that was the decision-making at the time. Pretty sure I was the chair that year, so I remember just more of the backup because, you know, the details of it. But, you know, I, I'm not trying to put myself in your office and try to run your office either, but, I mean, we're tasked with the budgetary side and trying to be as fair as possible. There's also other elected officials, other departments. So I think, in my opinion, I need the comparables to back it up.
Melissa, could I ask you a question, please? Could you just, because this, this position received four percent?
Yes.
Has this position been, has the wage of this position been at any detriment to other wage plan employees generally, or is it, or is the sheriff meaning in this, in this department where this union got this particular M O U raise?
I will say that she does have the only position in the office and possibly comparable to another position in the county. But not really comparables with lieutenants in the jail.
One other position in the county is similar?
I believe there's one.
What would that be?
It would be the office manager for the attorney's office.
Okay. Was this position considered when you were running comparables?
I've not considered these positions for comparables. She's at the top of the wage matrix that we had for this position at the time. So she hasn't received any step increases.
Okay, so it's similar, could be a similar nature to the office manager in the attorney's office?
Yes.
The attorney's office received a different, I mean, that union received a different?
Well, she's, that position's not union, but they also received the four and the four and a quarter.
Okay.
Not the bonus.
Did the attorney's office give any additional beyond that? Did they, did they not get an additional bump as part of that departmental bump?
The attorney's did.
Just not, not her position?
No, not her position.
It would be, in my opinion, it's pretty diff, it would be comparing apples to oranges. If you look at the number of employees that this, this administrative assistant is managing their payroll and the accounts receivable and accounts payable, they're not even close. How many, what's the budget of the county attorney's office, and how many employees do they have?
I'm just saying in the-
I'm just saying the workload's not, it's not comparable. I mean, I, I understand you guys have a job to do. This is a, this is a person that's highly valued in the sheriff's office, has mistakenly, and I take ownership for her not, for me not arguing more over the last several years, but now it's been brought to my attention in a way that can minimize any expense to the county by taking those discretionary funds and moving them over. We're gonna give back six hundred and sixty thousand of our budgeted money this year, and that, most of that's because the jail's not open. But I think if you look at a ten-year history, the sheriff's office has been very, very frugal with the money that we've spent. We routinely are giving back well over a hundred thousand dollars even in the several years prior to me being sheriff. So I don't foresee this ever being an issue for the board in any way, shape, or form. This is trying to reward an employee who does exceptional work and to compare to somebody in an office, no offense. It's just a lot smaller office and a lot less stuff to manage.
Yeah, well-
I mean, comparables aren't just done within. I mean, they're done with other counties as well. That's-
That's the comparable that was raised, so I'm just saying it's apples to oranges if you, if you ask me. So I understand you guys have a job to do, and I think I've made my case as best as I can make it, and I'll wait to see what your decision is.
I would just like to reiterate that when we made the position raises in the past, I mean, that involved two to three months' worth of studying comparables on all those positions before we did it. So we weren't picking winners and losers. We weren't trying to show favorites. We, and I'm not saying you are.
Oh, I am. I am picking a favorite because of the work that she does. And sometimes government gets in its own way by taking two or three months to have committees and make decisions and do whatever, and instead of just doing the right thing. So I'm here, and what I think is doing the right thing, I'll let you guys make the decision whether you agree with me or not. If you do, I appreciate it, and if you don't, I respect your tough decision.
Okay. Well, our timeline starts today, just to be clear, not before, when, when these things can be brought up. Did this board intend to, because first it's an issue of intent. Did we intend for, for all of the office to go up eight percent? Or was it a union position? Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I, I remember one of the things that had just been bandied about when we talked about the sheriff's office was the jail administrator, if I'm using the wrong term, Todd Harlow, in terms of we were looking at a variety of elected officials, deputies, percentage deputies. And, and so I think I had asked a question at that point, how about this individual? I will say, and this is not to sway one way or another, it's, it's always hard, and I think I've been consistent on this, it's always hard when someone in management receives a higher percentage than somebody who's front lines, if that makes any sense. So what I, what I perceive from that is you have an individual working in an office where someone is receiving a twelve, fourteen, twenty-one percent pay bump, and in that same office, well, I may kind of be on the front lines and I'm not receiving that percentage. Is that a fair characterization? In other words, Todd or other people, what I think I hear you saying, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Sheriff, is in, within that same office, you have people like Todd and others who are receiving twelve, fourteen, larger percentages because we did do-
And they were all justified.
Right, right, agreed. And yet you have somebody working in that same office receiving four. Is that fair?
Yes, and, and there were other, I don't know if you'd call them, I don't know, I don't, I guess I'd call them bonuses or other things that were done for the employees. Again, all fair. I commend you guys for doing it. Again, I take the ownership and the responsibility for this employee who got overlooked for a couple of years other than the, the cost of living adjustment or raise or whatever you want to call it. And so this is my attempt to make it right by her. She does an exceptional job with a very difficult office to manage. There's a lot of ins and outs, and I think, you know, the auditor's office could verify the, the work that she does is, is, there's a lot of it. She does a lot of, a lot of work. So this is just my way to try and make it right for her.
So I was just trying to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, as far as was our intent. I don't know that our intent was everybody in the same office at the same percentage. But I could see the ramifications of someone saying, hey, here's someone in management, so to speak, who's getting twenty-one or twelve, and I'm getting four. I've always had trouble with that, and so neither here nor there, just standing.
Obviously, the reason only one union got eight is because of extraordinary staffing issues in this case. But that is a principle that's, the board should consider what you just mentioned. Melissa, does this, would this action just by default raise the top end of this, of the wage scale for this position? And do you have any recommendation for us, or would you like to stay politically neutral?
I have no recommendation, and this would be the top of this wage scale for her. It would move it up to that six thousand.
And that would move it to what, what dollar amount?
Eighty-one, eighty-one nine seventy-five.
How long has this person been in this position, roughly?
I'd say seven years. Right, yeah, this position's been seven years, but she was promoted to this position. I do know that. Around seven.
Yeah, I, I, I don't want to get myself in trouble with guessing how long she's been here because that could get, you know, you don't want to guess wrong. But a while.
Do you have any thoughts on a, on a study, Melissa?
I-
Is, is this an easy position to compare? Different counties have different size jails. I'm not sure it would be easy. Do you, do you think it would be?
No, it would not be easy because actually there's so many different titles for people that I would have to go out and pull the job descriptions and, and see their actual responsibilities.
I, I did ask her if she could do a comparable, and that's the difficulty, she, 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 meaning, not you.
Oh, okay.
She meaning the administrative assistant, to see if she could do comparables. And it was, it was difficult to try and figure out. One county might have a couple people doing the work of one, and somebody else is doing something different. And so we couldn't get an easy comparable.
Right.
Just because I did ask her to do that. So she had reached out to several of the counties but couldn't find a, a position that was comparable enough for what she does for the sheriff's office. Because there are some people that do her work that are, I think, in an auditor's office handling all the, the payment and stuff like- Yeah.
What was the, what was it you just said, there, Melissa?
And the smaller counties, there's more responsibilities in the auditor's office.
Of course, that is also another challenge with comparables is that not every county is the same and has the same resources.
She's been with a county for twenty-six years. Michelle just confirmed.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Oh, okay, thank you.
I'm unfortunately not much help in what you guys did in the past, you know, I was not here three years ago, four years ago. The only raises I remember involved the attorney's office, which were for serious circumstances that we're still working through. However, I can understand to Jeremy's point, seeing a bunch of your office coworkers getting very large raises and you're kind of left there, and I'm sure you feel terrible, which is why you brought this here. It happens, you got up in the day-to-day, falls, falls through the cracks, I totally get it. I, I think that the range offering of what he presented as far as what the raises have been, this falls kind of on the lower end of the middle, so I don't think it's outrageous or egregious in any way, what, what she's asking or what he is asking for her. Given what they have been able to, uh, give back to reserves as a result of this past year's budget, I think also reflects on the people that are there and how fiscally responsible they are. So, speaking from that, I personally don't have a problem approving this tonight. If we want to go down the road of the comparable, I understand that it may take months of time. And if that's the case, then I think we would need to, if, let's say the comparable comes back and this is right in line, seven, eight, nine percent is what she should get, then it should be backdated to reflect that for the full year and not that she lost out on three months of us doing her homework. Thank you.
I guess, seeing there's challenges running a comparable on the position, then it kind of does change things.
I would agree with that.
So, I mean, it's, obviously, the goal is the supervisors to try to treat all employees as fairly as possible. The task is impossible to do. But I guess as far as this, you know, if we want to take the budget, you know, out of FY twenty-five for those professional services and stick them over, uh, here, and that's what the sheriff would like to do, and it seems, uh, appropriate here, then by all means, then I would move that.
My second.
A motion by Raddick, second by Taylor, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but your motion is to increase by seven point nine percent the biweekly pay for this employee.
And then, of course, that would probably coincide with a budget amendment to use the FY twenty-five professional services. I don't know if that's Dennis's task in the future, or if we can do that in this motion as well.
I think with it being in the same budget, the, uh, the sheriff has the authority to work with the finance director to make that transfer.
I mean, we have to direct that.
Right. So then, at the end of that motion, with funds to, uh, come from sheriff's line item for legal services?
I think all the professional services.
Okay, I'm just reading the agenda item, professional services. Yeah, with this being a difficult, uh, position to do a wage study on, although that might be preferable normally, in this case, we have to make a, a specific decision. I think it can be justified. That's all I'm concerned with, is justifying to the public, um, why we're making this change right now, so. Additionally, the duties will only get more intensive going forward. And so regardless of the timeline, the board is pretty much conducting its wage study. And there's few data markers to say this is a fair increase and that's a unfair increase, so. And with the lack of available metrics, uh, we're going based on what the rest of the office has received for a unique position. Hope that was a fair summary. Uh, any other comments, Mr. Gill?
Uh, Michelle, can you come up and clarify exactly what it's gonna be, because there are lots of times when it gets confusing afterwards.
My understanding is it's gonna be seven point nine percent applied to the fiscal year twenty-five salary for this individual will be applied to the biweekly rate, so her first paycheck will be one twenty-sixth of that amount.
And I just want to make sure, because this is where I think it's gotten confusing. Is that before or after the bump that everybody else with wage plan would be receiving, or is that seven point nine in total? I just want to clarify.
It is after. The fiscal year twenty-five wages already have that three percent applied.
He mentioned after three percent, yeah.
Okay.
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 Which indirectly will add six thousand dollars to the annual amount calculated.
Good with that motion, Mr. Raddick and Taylor. Any other discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. Item eleven from the Board of Supervisors submitted by myself and Supervisor Nelson. This is for action, this is approval of one hour of paid time off on July third for certain secondary roads, emergency services, and sheriff's office employees to attend a public appreciation breakfast following their extraordinary assistance to county citizens during the current flooding disaster. Given, a lot of people say, you know, when you talk about who responds to a disaster, you don't often think about secondary roads, but the bulk of our employees on the, on the county side in regards to, um, you know, combating these waters and trying to mitigate the damage has been secondary roads and also excellent service provided by emergency personnel. And I believe we've all been hearing, um, how wonderfully our, our crews have been doing out there in regards to those smaller towns, the Little Sioux and that flood. And I know especially Mark has been hearing that feedback as well, so he was made aware that some citizens are, uh, just of their own accord, I believe, just setting up an appreciation breakfast at a location in Odo and, and wanted to specifically thank those members of, of our crews that have assisted. And that means a lot to us, um, I think I speak for the board. And, um, in order to allow this to happen and encourage the most participation from our county employees when this breakfast is being held between the hours of six-thirty and eight on July third, is to make it about this event, we don't want to complicate anything. I, we, I spoke to, uh, Michelle Scaff and I believe, uh, Melissa about this beforehand and confirmed that this can work. And we don't want to make it complicated by adding anything to accruals or make, you know, affecting retirement and causing all these other things, the calendar to be messed up. We just want to effectuate as many of our employees as possible. If they can make it during this time and if they directly assisted, that the department heads of these three departments would direct their employees and allow them the time off to simply go, um, you know, not otherwise be available, but to be present, um, and represent their positions and, and receive this thanks and breakfast from the citizens. Mr. Nelson, you can, you can comment on anything I missed.
No, that was a great synopsis, thank you, Mr. Chair. This actually, the whole thing came about by our secondary road workers being secondary road workers and making a wisecrack. They were, uh, worked late in Odo and they had to move some of their equipment to a different place to keep it out of the water. And they parked it at, uh, one of the volunteers' houses in Odo, and when they showed up the next morning to get their equipment, they teased Dave and said, yeah, Dave, do you have breakfast ready for us? And, uh, he said, well, you name a time and place and I'll make breakfast, so they've, uh, they have named their time and place and it is tomorrow morning. I'm told that, uh, between the Odo Community Club and Matt and Terry London that run the Odo Pub and Grub, that they've already fundraised the money, the breakfast is paid for, so there's no expense to us in any way. It's just, uh, thank you. I know the crews were working in, uh, Anthem and Odo to build the levee at least till ten, eleven o'clock that night. In Anthem, I think that their efforts did thwart some of the water, and Odo it definitely did. They had to add on to the top of the dike there and the water did exceed the old level of the dike. So had they not done that in Odo, uh, most likely the east side of Odo, on the east side of thirty-one would have seen substantial water damage. So very, they're just very, very thankful and, uh, the sheriff's office, emergency services, uh, are, as I talked about last week, our new director had the foresight to send to, uh, a paramedic and EMT to Danbury the night before all the bridges closed, so we had staff on the east side of the river to help the three towns that were trapped over there. And so everybody pulled double duty and made sure that we were in the right place to help, and so everybody out there is just very, very happy and thankful, and so this is just a, a good feel-good thing.
Commend you both for the item, it's good.
Hearing no other discussion.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Nelson, to approve one additional hour paid time off for employees of secondary roads, emergency services, and sheriff's office for use only on July third, appreciation of the extraordinary assistance to county citizens during the current flooding disaster. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you, and will rely on our department heads to schedule their staff accordingly. Item thirteen from planning and zoning.
Mr. Chair, sorry, just on the previous item, I, I talked to Supervisor Bittenger. Is there a majority of supervisors that plan to be there, or I just want to keep us out of?
I am planning to go down there early and help serve or whatever they would need help with, but.
I was planning on, planning on going, but now I can't, I have a commitment with my other job, so.
Yeah. I probably won't be able to go.
I think I'll have a commitment, are you?
Yeah, I will, I will too. I'm not able to make it.
Okay, all right, so I just wanted to keep us out if there were three of us that showed, thanks a lot.
Yeah, I, no problem. This is more for, for our staff to be in front of these people. So planning and zoning, Director Daniel Priestley, this is, uh, item thirteen A for action is approval of resolution to waive county fees associated with repair and redevelopment of flood damaged property in the unincorporated area. I mentioned this would be coming last week, uh, similar to what we've done in the past after similar circumstance.
Yeah, to be clear, I've got a statement that I, I do want to read into the record, but this is for the unincorporated areas only, and it's within the actual mapped area of the floodplain. And, uh, the statement that I have is, as property owners undertake the cleanup and repairs following the recent flood, staff would like to point out that residents do need to obtain, uh, this, uh, floodplain development permit before repairing and rebuilding, uh, damaged structures within that footprint. As of right now, we've, we've been trying to tally up, uh, generally, we're seeing about twenty-four, twenty-five structures, and we're gonna attempt to reach out to those individually, but we want to get the message out that permits are required for the county's participation in the, uh, National Flood Insurance Program. Participation in, in the NFIP allows property owners to purchase flood insurance and receive flood disaster assistance, state and federal grants and loans, and buyout funds for flood-prone property. Woodbury County's floodplain management ordinance requires permits to be obtained, of course, for any construction or development, redevelopment activity in the floodplain area. And this is the repair activities, the reconstruction activities, et cetera. The fourth whereas, uh, within the resolution tonight, uh, there's been a little bit of a revision, but I want to point this out for correction. Whereas a permit is needed for each building in the regulated floodplain where repairs will involve removing, altering, or replacing the roof, walls, siding, wallboard, plaster, insulation, paneling, cabinets, flooring, electrical system, plumbing, heating, and/or air conditioning. Those are very key things that, uh, involve the market value of the house. And, uh, one point that I want to make real clear is special conditions apply to the phrase substantially damaged buildings, those in which a total cost of repairs is fifty percent or more of the structure's pre-flood value. If a building is found to be substantially damaged, we do have regulations that require that repairs not begin until compliance with the floodplain ordinance is demonstrated. And this will require that repairs include elevating or floodproofing the structure to reduce the potential of flood damage. So you get to a point, if you get over that fifty percent threshold, where we're gonna be talking about base flood elevation data and actually finding a way to, uh, floodproof and elevate over the BFE. And so, uh, it's imperative that unincorporated landowners, uh, are informed of this, and we're gonna be putting out a statement of staff tomorrow on this, and we want to make it very clear with tonight's meeting. And so, asking this resolution, this is normally a hundred and ten dollar permit. So those that are affected, I think this, uh, waiver definitely adds some relief to, of course, all the issues and the stress that's been happening in the last several weeks for folks. So we definitely want to point out that, uh, staff will try to work with everybody as closely as possible to identify the situation as a whole, so.
So what you're saying is, um, they still have to go through the process, but it's just not going to have a fee?
Yeah, not gonna have a fee, but it, it is a required process for our good standing in the National Flood Insurance Program. And I know, uh, emergency, uh, management through the process has been making it very clear that property owners document what has been going on over the last several days. And so that's a key part, is proactively, uh, identifying those measures, uh, taking the sheetrock out, taking the valuable assets out is very essential for the calculation of that market value. So it's, it's key that the property owners watch very carefully on what that market value is and the assets and the, and the labor that goes into repairing the structure.
That's a key point, is a lot of things the county does is, is to keep, uh, to not endanger its, its national flood insurance. I think that gets missed a lot of times when we talk about regulations and what the county is requiring of people is, if it was just our county, it's different, um, but we have some national standards we have to comply with, so.
And one key example is, uh, I got, I was contacted yesterday by the NFIP, uh, the state coordinator, Jason Khan, and I know he's, uh, reaching out to the cities and the different communities as well. Today, we discussed, and I understand he's gonna reach out to Correctionville and a lot of the towns there around the Little Sioux and go through the expectations, because I can't speak for the cities, but they'll have to do these same procedures. And I want to be very clear that we're focused here on the unincorporated areas with this resolution. This fee specifically waives floodplain development permits for our compliance within the NFIP. The other thing, when I mentioned to them that we're looking at possibly waiving it today, they said, you're not waiving the permit, you're waiving the fee. So it's very clear the permit's a part of this process.
I'd move approval of the resolution to waive county fees associated with the repair and redevelopment of flood damaged property in the unincorporated area.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. Any, uh, further discussion? County can't help with everything, but where we can, we'll do so. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five zero. Item thirteen B is to receive the final report and the zoning commission's recommendation from their June twenty-fourth meeting to approve the final plat of second chance addition, a minor subdivision to Woodbury County.
This, uh, particular subdivision, uh, is just a one-lot subdivision, uh, it went through extra territorial review through Sioux City. They approved it, it looked good through the commission, uh, the county engineer. The property owner basically is, it's kind of a family situation where they're splitting the lot so a family member can build the house. But, uh, it went through the process and the commission definitely sends a recommendation for acceptance and approval.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five zero. Item C is to accept and approve second chance addition to Meyer subdivision of Woodbury County. I'll second the motion by Raddick. Hearing no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, although we may be calling on you for this next one. Uh, item fourteen from the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Raddick, for action is approval to direct the zoning commission to look at the zoning of nuclear energy.
Uh, this is something we discussed, uh, you know, that would come back on the agenda and, uh, I just feel like, you know, we don't want to miss any of the things that we've already discussed as far as energy in, in Woodbury County, so. I think the discussion is important to have and, uh, involves community output and public meetings, so. Dan, I bet you thought you were gonna get to sleep. No, there's more work for you. As long as they all vote for it, I guess.
We'll, we'll take it to the commission and, uh, do our homework.
Would you recommend any particular stipulations on the motion, or is just look at nuclear energy good enough?
I think the, starting out on any kind of research, it's good to have that research question, so if we, if I'm able to bring that directly to the commission and say, we're gonna look at it, we'll- gonna look at it," we'll try to narrow it down through the funnel and come up with some type of recommendation.
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So one of the things that I think would be interesting is to see if Mid-American representatives would be there, because it's rare for a county. Seems like many times, I hate to use the word foisted upon, counties, there are alternative energy solutions that are being proposed that aren't very welcome by neighbors, residents, farmers, those who are having to live here. One of the things in our discussion, I think it's been a very healthy one over the last two and a half, three years, is with wind and solar in particular, we're looking at, you know, how could an energy source replace what's been lost at Neil? And we know that it would have been a, you know, a huge impact on our ag land in order to be able to do that, something along the, you know, two thousand five hundred acres and upwards, which is why I think there was so much resistance. So I guess in looking at what could be replacing the, what was lost at Neil, this would be interesting to have, you know, this is something from the county, from potentially the county board, asking our energy partners, you know, what technologies are there, what would this look like, and so on. So I just encourage that seat at the table.
Yeah, and not to jump too far ahead on looking at it, but some initial looks at it, this is definitely one area that there's quite a bit more regulation on it, so we kind of gotta look at the aspect at the local level as far as how do we facilitate that, because we know quite a bit already that there's quite a bit of regulation up at the different levels of government. So we have to look at that and see how it can fit in, and see how we facilitate it here locally to make it be a target location where a potential site could be here. So it's, to me, it's kind of looking at that scope from the top down to see how it fits here, so...
It's just good to plan ahead and have a plan before you need it.
Yep.
Rather than scramble when it's too late, so...
Yep.
Is there any areas, Mr. Raddick, or anyone that you'd want excluded from this consideration by the commission, or...
I figure if the commission just follows best practices and does what they do, they should come up with something good. I don't have any specific direction to them.
Okay, any other thoughts?
I would just say, make sure that kind of, I don't know if they call it non-traditional nuclear, modular nuclear, that's kind of the new frontier, that that's part of the equation. There may not be as much to look at that as far as some of the old types, but definitely look into everything as far as even what's coming at us on the horizon, so...
And always kind of the top question is, what would be the appropriate district, too?
Sure.
That would be a huge part of this, so...
And commercial nuclear, right?
Industrial.
We don't know, I mean, there's maybe some entrepreneur out there that... Any other discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. Item fifteen, reports on committee meetings.
So I had SimCo Exec, Certpa, Certs Housing Trust Fund, then we had a Certs Employee Appreciation Dinner. Lot of good news as far as getting towards year end, fiscal year end, and where we are financially and all those budgets, they're all in good shape. That's good news. Through Certs and Housing Trust Fund and some of the other boards there, it's just neat to see the impact that they have on the community. To see the Housing Trust Fund to have made some houses livable that were not going to be able to be fixed by the homeowners. It's just really, really great to see the impact. A gal's home lost a boiler unit, they were able to get that replaced for with emergency funds, and, you know, it's something where she would have been probably freezing cold last January, third week of January, and this is gonna make it so she can live in there long-term. And then with the Certs Employee Appreciation Dinner, we had a certain driver that came to me, knowing my position as the chair, and then also knowing the position of what I do, and had a person on the route that did no longer had, no longer had a chair to sit or sleep in because it was damaged. And that driver involved his son and grandson, and we worked together, they paid for the chair, and we delivered that out to her, and just to see the kind of challenges that some of the individuals that use those services have to live in on a daily basis, kind of really makes you appreciate, you know, whatever you want to call it, middle class, or just the comfortable life we do have, and it's very impactful to be a part of it, and I guess, you know, those are the things you're gonna miss when you, six months from now, but just wanted to give that update.
If I can, Mr. Chair. Keith tends to be a little more self-effacing. My dad drives for shirts, and I want to just mention, after our, the meeting before last, Keith was the one who helped purchase that chair, drove out to this woman's house, and actually helped deliver and set that up, because she has so much pain trying to sleep through the night with a twenty-something-year-old chair, and then hauled away the old one, and he would never say it, but that's something that he did quietly, and I think it remarkably impacted her life, so thanks for doing that.
Thanks for being a part of that, and like I say, this, it's definitely life-changing for this woman who could, you know, barely walk, and, you know, she relies on her public transit through Certs, and through that relationship, through the, you know, the kindness of, you know, Gerald's heart, and seeing the situation she's in, I think that was, it was just a good thing to do.
Anything else, Mr. Raddick? I, earlier today, participated in a conference call with the seven, with the seven of us as counties that have been engaged with Mr. Timothy Whipple, and to discuss the disappointing finding resolution decision by the IUB. They basically claim that it's no more dangerous than natural gas and does not impede economic development. Obviously, we disagree with that, all of our counties. One thing that was interesting, it was an observation we brought up, is that twenty-five days of testimony, and the IUB, if you look at, I believe it's page ten on the massive, massive document, hundreds of pages, was that they really didn't place much care, consideration, or respect on oral testimony from the people that took time out of their day and their jobs to go give that testimony. Other bits of evidence, they seem to receive more adequately, but twenty-five days of briefings and the people that go before this board were basically in this document, which is pretty remarkable, accused of duplicative testimony, the board questions their, questions that they may have committed perjury in the document, and accused their attorney of violating rules of professional conduct. You know, these are laypeople. They may not have read the massive document that this board shared publicly, or that was filed, hundreds of several hundred pages filed before the IUB, and they're just speaking from their own experience, and for the IUB to come, to come down so hard on people just wanting to engage, I mean, we talk about why people don't get involved in politics, this is textbook. I mean, you're gonna be accused of perjury by the IUB because you just said how this is gonna impact your life. That's just a public service announcement right there. So where we are right now is, in accordance with the deadline, the, our counties will, through our existing agreement, file a routine reconsideration of the final order, covered under our existing agreement. At that point, we'll have a decision to make, and everyone knows that. So expect a closed session for this board in the next few weeks, I'd say, to discuss that, and that's all I'm going to say about that. But I did want to relay, speaking to the chairs of these other counties, we're just, we're just in disbelief at how the IUB treats our constituents, and as we wonder what we can do, that's gonna be on our minds, because we know what matters to the IUB, and it's apparently not the oral testimony of our citizens.
I'd like to add, I haven't read that briefing, Matthew, but I watched a lot of that testimony live, and the way that those people treated the folks testifying was terrible. And so I guess I'm not too surprised to read that, having seen it live, but it's, there's just no words for it. And I think one of the funniest things, and I don't remember who this gal was, but she was up there testifying about it being close to her property, and one of them asked, I believe it was the chair, "Well, how close is it gonna be to your house?" And she said, "I don't know, they won't tell me, some of it won't tell me where the route is." And he, he made a comment about, "Well, what are you doing here if you don't even know?" And she said something back like, "Well, maybe it would have been nice if they would have went first." And everybody in the gallery laughed, but I mean, that was, the process was so poor that they, you know, and I think it was unprecedented that the, that the citizens had to go first. I think typically in those processes, they go second, and they let the companies make their case first. Anyway, I, I'm not surprised to hear that, but it's concerning, so... Shifting, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, shifting gears. Conservation Board, I'm trying to, we've got several things happening out there, but obviously they've had parks that have been impacted by the flood, and so I'm not gonna talk about that, other than some little stuff that I know. Little Sioux Park, I drove through that this weekend, really not much there, other than the walking trail from Correctionville that goes across Old Railroad Bridge out there, has been very badly, it's just gone in places, it's like it was never there. I know that at Snyder's Bend, we have sustained some flooding damage to the cabins, the water came up there so fast that they couldn't sandbag that, so I'll try to have an update regarding those next week. We're trying to run fiber out to Little Sioux Park to provide internet, not only to the workers out there, but also the campers. Fiber, long lines, is gonna be running a line down thirty-one, and it doesn't cost much for us to tie onto that and just run it to the park, but that may, we may be doing something different there, depending on what we have to do at some of these parks, so I'll try to have an update on that next week. I was in Correctionville yesterday afternoon with our emergency services director, Drew Byer, which is, he's been doing a fantastic job, Mike Montino, and as well as the mayor, city clerk of Correctionville, and Anthony Gall from Sioux City, or from Sergeant of Fire, excuse me. And Anthony's been going door-to-door with the other first responders, looking at these homes to see how impacted they are. Some, some things that were concerning yesterday out of that is, so far, they have found a hundred and fifty-two homes in Correctionville that have been damaged by floodwaters, and that is excluding any homes that have been affected by sewage backup. And what's concerning, they, so they, they don't have a count on the sewage yet, they've started a preliminary map that I have, but they haven't got a full count on that, but there's only roughly three hundred and forty homes in Correctionville, so you're getting close to a fifty percent impact zone there, which is concerning. I think less than six had been condemned, that they're not letting anybody live there because of, you know, foundations of all in, or the house had moved off of the foundation. I'm told that it cleared the eighteen ninety-one high watermark by five feet, so pretty significant. The good news is, is that I was down there Thursday and Friday, and they had great volunteers Thursday and Friday, and through the weekend. By the end of the day, Sunday, they had logged five thousand volunteer hours. The check-in is going very smoothly, everybody's got their badges, which is great, that's all gonna help. When we were in the meeting yesterday, they confirmed that FEMA had approved to send people on-site, which is the first step in the FEMA process of getting help, whether that's public help or individual help, or hopefully both. So we anticipate maybe we'll see some people out there this week, but Anthony sustained, you know, pretty much no damage other than their parking, and Odo had an issue with the water well, but we got, we worked through that, and they're all fine, but, so big thanks to Drew Byer and his crew, and Anthony Gall, Mikey, they've done a nice job out there, and they're, they're doing the best they can, so...
The only thing I have is just real quick, with the Sioux Land Human Investment Partnership, new board members just came on the board, so have some great community leaders that will be serving, and then just beyond the bell, the offices are getting upgraded and completely remodeled, so looking forward to be highlighting and bringing some pictures about that, and just showing the progress there, and take care of the workers and have a good working environment, so that's what's going on with SHIP, so that's all that I have.
I was wondering if I could request, Mark, would you be willing to do an LEC update? Obviously, there were a couple of us, or three of us, that weren't there for the meeting that was in public, and I know they'd sent out a press release, but just wondering if you could give a little bit of an aerial overview, and then are open to a couple of questions, or...
Yeah, so in the press release, really, there wasn't much, we tabled some items on the agenda, because Dan Moore, Commissioner Dan Moore, wasn't there today, but in the press release, we talked about the, the work is ongoing as far as the testing imbalances from the errors that Introba had made in the design. We've only got one box left, which is in the sheriff's office to be installed, otherwise they have testing balancing going on. We have not yet got a full answer from Introba on how to fix the, the noise levels and secondary control. Remind you that this is July second, they were made aware of this problem on April eighth, so...
Are we still at the point where RCE may be offering...
RCE's looking at it, Dale Drink is on-site today, looking at it, they're gonna offer, they're thinking, but, you know, obviously Introba would have to improve it, since it's their, it's their deal, but the, the lack of response time is awful.
Yeah, I concur with you there. And then, just because it was a quick glance at this, the seismic bracing pending item on the fire suppression system, looks like there's no acceptable submittal from Hausmann's subcontractor, and that sounds like a pretty substantial issue, a code issue, a life and safety, so reading the impact of this omission is still being evaluated. That has a potential to impact the substantial completion date, or it's, it looks like from the press release, and again, just from the press release, that that's a to-be-determined the four Mondays from now, that this is supposed to open.
Yeah, so the seismic bracing is required by code because of our soils, and it was in the drawings, it was in the schematics, it was a responsibility of Hausmann, it was building the project. They hired a subcontractor, Prairie Fire, to do that. They have not done that yet. And so the other interesting question is that our fire inspection passed months ago, and this is required for that to pass. So we'll leave that there. Hausmann sounds very optimistic as far as getting this work done. Baker and Ron have a meeting with HCI next week to discuss what this work is gonna take, but they cannot discuss the work until they have a plan from Prairie Fire on how their, how this is gonna be engineered and designed, which is their job, that's part of this project, it is their job to do that. And so until they have that plan and it's approved, HCI, we don't have a timeline as far as what they're looking at.
So maybe, would it be fair to say it may be in flux right now?
Absolutely, it is, yep, yep.
All right.
Yep.
That's very helpful, I appreciate it.
Hearing no other reports. Item sixteen, any citizen concerns?
Hey, everybody. Kevin Nelson, Mayor of Salix, four oh six Willow Street. Every time I think there's gonna be a stampede, and every time, there's nobody else but me that jumps up. All right. I'm here to give you three updates on everyone's favorite subject, the Salix Strange District proposal. Thank you for getting it postponed to August twentieth for your decision. First update is the Salix City Council approved the five-year agreement, public agreement with the Farmers' Range District. It's signed, it's done. Great. Second is that they met with VNK... Second is that they met with VNK, specifically Chad Kurt, because remember, VNK works for the board of supervisors. You picked them in February of twenty twenty-three. They report to you, not to City Salix or the other petitioners. They work for you. So Chad and VNK is working on this new and improved latest version of the drainage district, which is going to be from the interstate to Highway seventy-five, and then from Poplar, that main drag from the interstate to Highway seventy-five down to two eighty-first street, which is like the gravel road, like a mile down. Not all of that area is City Salix boundaries. Most of it is, but there's still a good chunk that's county, considered county. That's why the board of supervisors have to step in and make the decision. And the third thing I just wanted to update and remind you is that on August twentieth, if you decide to approve it, you have to make a secondary decision of, does the county supervisors keep it and you guys run it? Or do you want to hand it off to the city council of Salix? And I'm just here to remind you that city council is more than happy to take that on if you so choose. But the decision is ultimately up to you. And just as a, aside, it's surreal to me that two and a half years of dealing with this, with you guys, that towns are being flooded, Correctionville and the Cook Lake. And this is what Salix has been trying to prevent for their own city for two and a half years, is exactly this kind of flood situation. Luckily, we're not in it right now, but it could happen down the line. And that's why we're trying to do the own drainage district, so we can clean out the ditches that we have, make them deeper, make them wider, so it can hold more water, so that we are not the next on the list of, on the news of, oh, another town, break down and it got flooded. That's the whole point of this from the very beginning. So anyway, that's all I had. Good to see you guys.
Good to see you, too.
Definitely fortunate to not have had the reins of the other communities and get stuck with, I guess that would weigh heavily on me, knowing that this has taken this long and we're still nowhere, well, nowhere to a solution yet. I mean, we're taking steps, obviously, but it's, yeah.
Thank you. Any other citizen concerns?
Doyle Turner, twenty-seven thirty-eight two hundred Street, Mobile. I just want to say two things. I want to thank you guys for being proactive on the nuclear side of things, to be looking, you know, we, in America, we believe when you flip the switch, that something should happen, light should turn on, the motor should turn on. We have a lot of power nowadays that is dependent on wind and, and solar. And I firmly believe that we're going to go too far in that direction, to the point where we flip the switch and nothing happens. And I think it's going to take a while to get something done in this regard, but the sooner we start, the better off we all are. The other thing I'd like to say thank you to is the proactive way that you've dealt with, with Mr. Whipple and the pipeline situation. And I really appreciate you protecting the citizens of this county. This is a very egregious decision that there is no possible way this pipeline meets convenient and necessary. And I appreciate the, the time, the effort, and, and the funds that you have, have helped in this process. And I hope that, I, I firmly believe that we do have a very strong case in fighting this. And I, I think that if we don't protect property rights, we stand to lose it all. So I appreciate how important this is and how important you take it. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Any other citizen concerns? Item seventeen, any board concerns? Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to bring up, in terms of future Law Enforcement Center meetings, desire to attend. I think today, I did not because typically we've had, we not only have one of our own supervisors there, but then another in attendance. And so just wanted to see about posting those as notices of gathering. I know it's a public meeting, but I also understand the implications of having a quorum or a majority of board members in the room. I'm not sure the future in terms of closed sessions, how often they'll occur, et cetera. So I just wanted to bring that up as something that I would like to either have posted for the future, or I guess we would be relegated to the first one there. But I don't think that's really fair to, to tell Dan that I got here at noon and have been waiting. So does that sound just something that I wanted to bring up?
Any other board concerns?